I'd like to welcome everybody to the regular meeting of the Abington School Committee. Today is Tuesday, February 28, 2023, and we are here in the Abington Middle High School Library. I would first ask everybody to please stand to salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before we get into hearing of visitors, I just want to kind of reiterate some guidelines we have in them. I don't know how many people are going to talk tonight. Let's try to keep them brief. Our policy says three minutes. I don't want to have a stopwatch, but we can't be here all night. We have business to attend to, but I want to hear what everybody has to say. If the comments get repetitive, I'm just going to say if anybody has anything new, like we don't need to hear the same thing over and over again. You've already heard it. So that's kind of really all I wanted to get out before we started. So with that, if anybody would like to speak during the hearing of visitors, please let me know. Last thing too, please state your name and your address for the minutes, and you need to be a resident.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Acadia Manley. I live on Washington Street in Abington. I wanted to thank you all, especially Superintendent Schaefer, for your patience and your passion on the issue of challenging materials. I'm a senior at Abington High School, and I've been listening to this conversation since it began. When I heard this book is gay was first challenged, I was upset. And over the last few months, I've listened to the adults in the room debate whether this book holds value or whether this book is appropriate for students. I wanted to speak out because this is something I'm passionate about, but I haven't spoken at a meeting. I wrote letters to you and I printed out the cover of this book is gay to hang out, hand out around the high school to bring attention to this issue. My advocacy was immediately turned into fuel against my mother, leading her to quit her job. I wanted to speak at meetings, but I was scared. After listening to adults scream at each other across this room, I feared for my safety and my mental health. But I knew that if I left this alone, it would only lead to worse things. Students deserve to feel safe, and most of all, we deserve to be heard. It's our job as students who are directly affected by this to speak up. I believe that if any change is to be made to the challenged educational materials protocol, it should be to add a student from Abington High School to the review committee. I would leave the specifics of this up to you, whether the student would need to be 18 years of age or whether the student would need to be well versed on the topic. I would love to discuss it further. But we as students deserve the chance to show you our maturity, instead of just being told that something isn't appropriate. Students shouldn't have to feel helpless when it comes to issues like this. We should be able to make or at least influence the decisions made that directly affect us, especially when it comes to our education. As a student at Abington High School, I can tell you that if I didn't have access to a diverse collection of books, I would not be prepared to go out into the world. If we only have access to one kind of book, we will begin to think that is the only perspective that exists, or even worse, that it is the only perspective that matters. As students, we deserve to see ourselves in what we read, and we deserve to learn about others, especially if the book includes different identities from our own, because this is how we learn empathy. If adults are the only ones making these decisions, then that is the only perspective that we will see in our library. When it comes to my school library, I want to be able to read with diversity and empathy, and I want to be able to read from every perspective. Please consider adding a student to this challenged educational materials protocol. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. The only thing I want to address is that I know you brought up a suggestion of a change in policy. If the committee wants to discuss that tonight, they can, but it may have to be held off and talked about further just because it's not something that takes spur of the moment.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Would anybody else like to speak at this time?
I would.
Please state your name and your address.
My name is Tony DeBono, 98 Temple Street. I don't want to be up here again. However, having reviewed the proposed amendments to the challenged educational materials policy, I'm left with little choice. Before I address them though, it should be clear at this point that because this book banning militia can't win challenges on the merits or even by intimidation, they now want to undermine and otherwise corrupt or overwhelm the challenge and review process wherever possible. I would be remiss not to mention that this committee has already been publicly threatened with lynching by millstone. Please understand that Ms. Baldner's climactic Bible verse was neither idle-
Please leave other people's names out.
Okay, so the previous challenger's climactic Bible verse was neither idle imagery nor innocuous excerpt. So this is where we are now. Keeping that in mind, let's look at some of the amendment proposals. The amendments to Sections 3.5 and 3.6 would put the complainant on the review committee and give them input on the selection of another member. These present such egregious conflicts of interest that I have to at very least question the ethical integrity of whomever proposed them. Meanwhile, the Section 2 amendment proposal would require all challenged materials to be removed pending review. Apparently, they hope we'd missed the fact that this would simply enable the militia to bury this committee in an avalanche of challenges. And then with dozens or even hundreds of items now removed, coupled with an intentionally overwhelming review docket, the militia would effectively succeed without having to win on the merits of even one single challenge. This would be catastrophic for educators and students alike, but then again, that's the game. Likewise, the Section 9 amendment could easily be exploited as a delay tactic. Frankly, none of the amendments pass even the most basic ethical or practical sniff tests. The school committee should only be expected to consider challenges that are made in competent, good faith, as opposed to a too bigotry and unhinged zealotry that we've seen so far. As such, it seems fair and reasonable that complainants demonstrate that they have not only read, but actually comprehend the material and are not just inflamed by manufactured outrage fueled by cherry picked snippets. Therefore, the kind of amendment I'd like you to consider at some point would require that upon challenging any material, the complainant would also be required to come before the committee and present a coherent and factual 500 to 1,000 word summary of the material in their own words and answer simple content-based questions from the committee about the material. The committee would then evaluate and vote as to whether this challenge merits further review. Lastly, failure to comply, including plagiarism, would result in an automatic dismissal of the challenge. Again, we need to stop being on the defensive and reject this deplorable gamesmanship, and we need to put this pointless distraction to rest so that you can return to doing the important work for which you were elected. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Would anybody else like to speak this time? Please state your name and address.
My name is Curtis Chauvinier. I live at 184 Summer Street. In regards to the proposed changes, main concern I had is more of a parliamentary one. There's an even number of people on it. If no mechanism is in place in the event of a tie, that leaves an awkward situation. Something just worth considering because how that gets handled from there in the event of a tie is unusual. I'm going to leave alone the fact that a person who brings the challenge forth gets a vote on it, that they would have the ability to pull the challenge back. So their vote is almost unnecessary, because if they change their mind, they could just pull back the challenge. So mainly, it's the parliamentary issue of a tie that needs to be worked out, and some kind of mechanism needs to be taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chauvinier. And I can say that committee, their task is to recommend to the superintendent. So agreed, if it comes to a tie, that's something we could probably look at. But in the end, the decision lies with Superintendent Schaefer, whoever it is in the future, so. Would anybody else have anything to speak on? Please come to the podium.
Is it okay from here?
No. If you could please come to the podium, thank you. That's okay. Please state your name and address.
Yep. Heather Sage Hardery, 145 Randolph Street. I have a little bit of a different take, I think, than anyone who has spoken. The American Library Association, the Massachusetts Library Association, the Massachusetts School Library Association, all have very clear guidelines on how a challenged material process should go. And Abington's process currently really reflects those guidelines. They're recommended by the Mass Association of School Committees as well. So in my point of view, or from my interpretation of these guidelines, the proposed changes go directly against those things. The guidelines that kind of oversee all of the libraries say that a challenger should not be part of the review committee and also say that a book should not be removed until the end of the review process. So my recommendation or suggestion is to leave the policy as it is.
Thank you, Ms. Hardery.
Yeah.
Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Mike McDonald, 3 Pine Cars Road. You know, I've listened a lot. I've spoke a little bit. You know, I think you'll know my feeling on it. I can't possibly fathom the perversity that, you know, heterosexual, homosexual, this is the issue. This is our children. This is, if we have no virtue, we have no, you know, the protection. It is about love and it is about our children and loving them and, you know, protecting their purity, you know, as long as possible. I mean, I think, I just can't understand why this is such a divisive topic when, you know, you go outside here, if parents want to have their children, you know, read stuff like that and be exposed to that, you know, I think, you know, that's their prerogative, right? But as a school board, as a public administration, we have middle school kids here. You know, we have a right as adults to protect them, to protect their integrity, to give them, you know, you know, purity, chastity, these things that nobody, you know, we don't want to talk about. But it seems a little crazy to me that this has blown up so much because it doesn't seem like it's that difficult an issue. If it was any other type of, you know, over the top book, it shouldn't be in a middle school. I mean, it seems to be very simple to me, but I don't know why people get so hostile over it. It's like, we love our children. We want, you know, if that's what you feel is best for your children, you have the opportunity to get them that access. But in a public system where my child can just walk through, you know, and pick it up and, you know, now, you know, these thoughts were, you know, those aren't my beliefs, you know? So I think, you know, it's got to be, it's got to, I'm really saddened by the fact that it's blown up so much that it's not as simple as we ought to protect the purity and the integrity of our children for as long as possible, you know? Because the world's nuts. We've seen it, you know? So, yeah, it's very disappointing.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Would anybody else like to speak before we move on to the rest of the agenda? Okay, I'm going to close the hearing of the visitors at this time and move on to reading and approval of records. We have the minutes from our last meeting on January 24, 2023, in front of us. After review, I'm looking for a motion to either accept or approve as amended, the minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Anybody second?
I can second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next up on the topic, next up on the agenda is unfinished business. And I stated at the end of our last meeting that, at the next meeting, so this one, we're going to go over some of our options. As everybody knows, Superintendent Schaefer has announced his retirement effective June 30, 2024. So at that time, we'll need to have a new superintendent in place. There are many, so this is for the public as well as the entire committee. So there are many, there are different options to go about trying to find a replacement. There are search committees that public companies can have. MASC does a search committee. We can do our own, we can do our own search on our own as a board without the help of an outside source. If there's somebody that we think would fill the role, we can move in that direction. There are a multitude of directions that we can move in as a school committee. The one person we're in charge of hiring is the superintendent. So I did want to let the committee know I did reach out to MASC to ask them for an approximate cost, because it would cost money obviously to hire as a search committee. I have an approximate line, like $11,000 is what it would cost if we were to hire MASC to help us go through them to find a new superintendent of schools for us, if they were to conduct their search.
Is it just that fee or do we also have to pay like a portion of the salary?
I believe, so it was a quick email and I got a reply back and I didn't have a chance to call anybody, but it looked like that was all inclusive. So it sounded like it was between $10,500 and $11,500, what was written in the email. So I'm just taking the middle number as an approximate cost of what it would cost to hire them from start to finish into, like, I guess whatever the process entails in the end, so. So that's kind of where, I'm open to discuss anything that we want to discuss regarding the next superintendent. So I leave it to the committee if they want to bring anything up. I can bring some stuff up, but I don't know if any kind of discussion we want to have.
Are we allowed to talk about what we may have talked about in the past?
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed possible replacements and we're discussing other contracts and stuff, so, yeah.
Well, can I, I think from what I gathered of what our options were, that going with MASC, MASC would just be a waste of time in life, when I think we already have an idea.
I wouldn't, I don't disagree with that. I'm just wanting to present kind of all the options that we had available. I figured it made sense for me to look up and see what it costs, at least know, to let everybody know that. So that's fine. This is where it's open for us to discuss that.
So are we allowed to make a motion on a particular person?
Yeah, we're allowed to make a motion.
So can we make a motion on Dr. Michellea pending contract negotiations?
So a motion to appoint Dr. Michellea as the replacement for Mr. Schaefer pending contract negotiations?
Could I before we do a motion, could I just share a few things?
Yes, yeah.
So I just wanted to say that Felicia is an asset to us, Dr. Michellea. She's smart, articulate, and committed to our community. She's dedicated 18 years to the Abington Public Schools, serving in many different roles, wearing many different hats. She was a ProleO middle school principal from 2005 to 2008, Assistant Superintendent for Business and Finance from 2008 to 2018, and has been the Assistant Superintendent since 2018. She knows everything about our school's curriculum, facilities, finances, and she's a lot of stability that many other towns envy. Over the past few years, there's been a revolving door of administrators in other nearby districts. I have experienced that personally in multiple districts and know what that does. Excuse me. Many of these school systems would love the chance to steal a very talented, competent, capable, and committed Assistant Superintendent. Many districts reach out to her when they have a question, and she in fact teaches others how to be an administrator. But I think most important for me is that she is respected by those she serves, students, parents, and her staff.
Yeah, I mean, I can add to that too. I've reached out. I mean, I've had administrators reach out to me over the last month to let me know their thoughts on a potential replacement. They echo the same kind of thing you said, Danielle. I've asked people since, I mean, so we didn't just find out a month ago that Mr. Schaefer was planning his retirement. We've known for a little bit longer. So it's questions that have been asked around to try, just try to get an idea. So I echo much of what Danielle said. Anybody else have anything to add?
I agree. I think that is well said, and it would be very difficult for us to lose Mr. Schaefer and Dr. Michellea.
And what happens after that.
Exactly.
Continuity of high-level understanding and faith and trust between administrators and staff and families with Dr. Michellea, I think absolutely right now seems to be in the best interest of our families.
So right now, we have a motion from Heidi to appoint Dr. Michellea, the superintendent-elect, I guess is a term we can use, pending successful contract negotiations.
A second.
A second from Julie. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Congratulations.
Good luck with that, Felicia.
Did you say yes to the dress?
I just wanted to thank the committee and thank the community for putting their faith in me. It's an honor and a privilege to serve Abington today, and it will be an honor and a privilege to serve the students and families of Abington in the years to come. So thank you.
No, thank you. Awesome. All right, so moving on, I guess, moving on. The report of the Director of Student Services, Dr. James Robbins.
Hi, everyone. I'm just here to update everyone on a program that we've partnered with in our ongoing effort to support mental wellness and mental health among our student population. So recently, we partnered with the agency known as Care Solus. And what this agency does is that when we know that there is a student in our care who requires some outside therapy, the Agency of Care Solus is able to connect directly with the family in order to find mental health counselors or substance abuse counselors who are licensed and serve our geographic area. The reason why this is, in my view, a very positive development is that many times, we in the schools will identify an emerging mental illness among a member of our student population, and will inform families of this, and will provide literature and some referrals and let them know who they can seek in our community. But oftentimes, families are lost in the process of finding a mental health counselor. And then we can be, and then some staff members may be talking about a very same student like several years later and realize, oh, you know, counseling was previously recommended for this student. And when we talk to parents about it, what it is time and time again is that they're on very long wait lists or no one wants returning their call, or they just weren't sure of what the best fit is. So it's just a well-known issue that families have a hard time navigating the mental health process. So therefore, this Care Solus agency helps to bridge that difference. So how it works is we'll tell a family that we are a partner with Care Solus, and if they'd like that, we can make a referral for their child to this agency. The agency will then find mental health counselors in the area, you know, within an approximate distance, who serve whatever the presenting condition is. And then Care Solus will work with the family until a first appointment is made. And that to us feels like just, you know, enormous progress, knowing so many families are stymied by this process. So in addition to serving students, so we started first by knowing that this is something that definitely serves students. But Care Solus is also available to any member of our staff and any member of the families of children in our care. So as long as there's an individual either connected to our staff or connected to a student in Abington, they have access to the service. So as I said at the outset, the easiest way it works is that we identify a student who needs this care, and then we make a referral on their behalf. Of course, we ask parents first to sign off on a permission form to confirm that they in fact want us to make this referral. But some families may be uncomfortable with the school being involved in this process. They may feel like mental health is more of a personal or family issue, and we absolutely respect that. And Care Solus is able to facilitate families who wish to proceed anonymously. So we also have a website, it's caresolus.com/AbingtonPS. So if a family wishes to just step away from the school and proceed alone, they can just access this website and still drive the benefit of Care Solus, which is just finding a mental health counselor in the geographic area and creating an appointment for them. And there's also a telephone number too. Just because I know this is public, I'll say it. So this service is available 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. It's available, they have receptionists who can speak any language, so we can make a referral for any family. And Care Solus also works with providers who service all insurance types. So, you know, regardless of your insurance, regardless of the language that you may speak, Care Solus can help facilitate counseling for your family. So I was just up here to share that our district is now partnering with this. Our mental health staff are already working with families using this service, and so just using this forum to spread the word.
Yes, please. This is great. I'm just wondering, I know I'm familiar with a similar program. If someone goes through Care Solus, does that help achieve an expedited appointment by chance? Or are these going to be here, some great people? It might be six months. Do you happen to know?
Yeah, so the idea of the service is it's supposed to be expedited as much as possible because the solution the agency offers is that arranging mental health appointments is difficult, and we'll try to sort of expedite the process. So I know that's the whole objective. In our work with the agency, they tend to ballpark, you know, about 20 days from first contact to grading an appointment, which is, for most families, that's like, that's, you know, much faster than usual.
Absolutely. All right, thank you.
Just a comment. This is awesome. This is so great. I'm just going to ask that you and your department share this information over and over and over and over again to parents in every way that you can. Don't just send it out once. Please, you know, keep reminding families that this is available because it is so difficult to find providers right now, so this could be a huge help to a lot of families.
Great. Thank you, Julie. And just one thing I don't want to forget to mention is just that also we're in the process of creating business cards to share with police and fire so that oftentimes, they'll come across families who are in very vulnerable situations. And in the event that they come across a family who has a child connected to the Abington School District, they'll share the business card so that the family can readily access these services too. So it's just our way of kind of having some inter-agency collaboration to try to get the word out there.
Is this information currently on our website? Do we know?
I don't believe it is, but there are plenty of easy digest marketing materials, some of which are in our packets. So that's something we can have posted.
James, can I just ask you something? You might have already answered it with Heidi's answer, to be honest with you, but I guess. So I know there can be instances, like in a severe situation where an admittance may be needed somewhere, and I know like there's shortages of beds all around, right? Is maybe the answer like you gave Heidi about the expedite, is this, can they help you find a potential like bed like for the person quicker than on their own?
Yeah, so first I'll say that it's designed to respond to any level of severity. So be it emergency admissions, so it's designed to give immediate advice as to how to access those services. There are things called partial hospitalizations where children or adults will receive intensive support, and so they make partial hospitalization referrals as well. And then, of course, just routine, like weekly to monthly counseling appointment. But what you had said, you're speaking of something that's just like a hugely significant dynamic in mental health right now, which is, yeah, it's the case that there's a lack of emergency care for folks who are in acute mental health crises. And this agency, I don't think can necessarily expedite that, but what it can do for those individuals who are really struggling in a severe moment is give them like state-of-the-art best advice as to what to do in that situation.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much, James. Appreciate it. Next up, before the Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, if you want to come up, please. Dr. Basta.
Good evening, everyone. First, on our agenda, we are having the Art Department update, so let me get our technology up. Welcome on yourselves.
Chris, how long do you think?
I'm ready, but if you want to move on.
No, it's okay now.
I was going to try to buy time, that's all.
Hi, my name is Michelle Poirier. I'm the Director of Art K through 12. Some of the strengths of the Art Department, all students receive arts education, grades kindergarten through eighth. In high school, 9 through 12, it's an elective, so, you know, any student can choose art that fits in their schedule. The Art Department has grown over the last few years and changed. We added a part-time shared position this year from two periods at the high school and one period at the middle school. Our Woodsdale and Beaverbrook art teacher is in her second year here, and the middle school teacher is in her third year. So the last three years, it's really changed a lot, the department. Currently, right now, we're in the middle of a district-wide art show. We have a few of those per year at the public library. Beaverbrook is hanging out right now, grades K through 2. Beaverbrook is hanging up right now, grades K through two. We have a reception later this week on Thursday for the parents and the students. This is for Youth Art Month and then after two weeks, that'll come down and Woodsdale will go up for the rest of the month of March. In May, we have the Celebrate Arts Festival, five through 12, where we have a big art show for the middle school and the high school. It also is in collaboration with the music department, so the band will play, have their concert that night, so, you know, kind of a whole arts festival. And this just kind of shows evidence of the high-quality work of grades five through 12, any student taking art, shows their perseverance, their effort, and their engagement in the art program. Just a couple areas of improvement are a dedicated art room at the Woodsdale, just for space concerns this year. The art room was turned into a classroom because of classroom sizes, but it is difficult for our art teacher to teach on a cart going up and down, you know, on two different floors, different classrooms per day. The instructional time has been reduced just over a period of time from 45 to 30 minutes, but you can imagine on a cart going up and downstairs, 30 minutes is quite tight, especially this year at the Woodsdale. So if there's anything we could do to get a dedicated art room or increase instructional time would make her life a lot easier and improve the art education of those students. It also asked for an increase in the high school position to accommodate advanced digital art classes. We do have a new digital art teacher who is teaching introductory digital art this year, but with staffing and classes, we don't have room for advanced classes. So with an increase in her position of just, I don't remember the math point two, I think, we could have increased one more period where we could have an advanced digital art class to accommodate those kids who want higher education in digital art. Our Department curriculum, we focus on the Mass State Visual Arts Standards. There's four standards. We create art, we present art, we respond to each other's art, and we connect within their self to create their art. So those are the four things we really push in the department to always be thinking of when we teach the students. The high school courses are basically set up into three categories. You have 2D drawing and painting, you have 3D sculpture, and then you have the digital arts. Each of the programs has an introduction and an advanced level and then a level one version of the class. And in drawing and painting, there's an AP class. And just as a side note on the bottom, there aren't the advanced digital art classes currently because of staffing. On average, 250 to 300 students per year are electing art at the high school. Mostly, the introductory classes are the most popular, these are the half-year classes. So there are four sections each of drawing, painting, digital art, and sculpture, one, the introductory classes, and then two sections each of drawing, painting, and the sculpture portfolio classes, which are the advanced ones. This is the AP art data. The past few years, there's been one or two students per year who elect AP art. It was a very challenging course where it's very independent, they have to create a large body of work by the end of the year with their own idea. So, you know, I think not many students have that kind of ambition a lot of times to just teach themselves a lot, so the class size is pretty small. But some students do elect to do it and they do very well. You can see the scores last three years, everyone has passed three, fours, and fives. And two students this year who are doing it are doing very well and expect them to do well on the exam. Are there any questions about the Art Department?
That situation at Woodsdale, I know the space is not something that we're able to make appear. Was it just this year, or does it look like it's gonna be a permanent thing with classes at the Woodsdale?
Dr. Basta, you might need to go.
Because of the number of students at the Woodsdale, we reduce the class sizes by adding that role. I would anticipate that that would have to continue at least for next year, based on what got coming to Woodsdale.
And then you had mentioned adding a potential point two, which also is difficult to make that money appear for those positions, even if they're just point twos. I know it's not ideal at all, but in the art class, is it possible to accommodate the two different levels of kids? Could we have the advanced kids in there? Are they, are they advanced enough that with limited instruction for whoever teaches that class, the teacher would be able to handle the other kids and direct those kids?
Couple things about that, the digital art one classes, we only have 21 actual stations for computers and those classes are very well attended, they're usually full. And when I first started, I did teach both classes at the same time. And it's not that the advanced kids aren't advanced enough, it's that the introductory kids need constant help all the time. So the advanced kids tend to kind of feel neglected in those situations. So sometimes there are independent studies of kids that run at the same time as the introductory ones who are very advanced and can teach themselves, but it's not ideal to have both intro and advanced together at the same time.
In your opinion, is it, is it better to not offer it at all and just focus on the class that we do have, or have them both in there so that the other kids can put it on their transcript?
I think for the time being, it's better not to offer it. If we take away one of, two of the introductory classes, we won't have enough kids for the advanced class, so both of the levels, I think, will be underattended and then I think it'll just kind of fizzle out. So I'd rather keep pushing the numbers of kids that want to have the advanced classes to show that they, there is a need for it. And it also kind of inspires like the photography club after school that the new teacher has been running as well, and she's had good attendance with that, the kids that want more of the program.
And, thank you. And one last question, just more of a clarification. The student who is doing the AP art and putting forth the portfolio, it's a student in another class who individually puts that together, so there's not one student in that class.
Correct.
It's a student in another class, just for anyone who might be looking at that and saying, do we run a class with one student?
Right.
So it's one student taking it who, there's no teacher teaching only one student.
Correct. Yeah, in that classroom, there's actually three levels at once. There's just drawing, painting, two, portfolio, and AP together in collaboration, they're just doing their own thing.
Yeah, for those who don't know art, that might have been a little confusing, yeah. Thank you.
Mrs. Poirier, ask you a quick one about back to the Woodsdale. Is this the first year where there wasn't a dedicated art room?
I think for a while.
Okay, I guess, sure, phrase, the first year in a row.
Yes.
Okay.
And I do think there might be a concern for Beaverbrook next year about the spacing concerns as well. Definitely a challenge.
Can I ask you a question about the intro art that you were both talking about, the digital one? Is that for all grades, or is it?
All grades, yep, nine through 12, anyone can take it.
And then the, if we were to offer the advanced, that would be for all grades as well?
It'd be 10 through 12, yeah.
Okay. I mean, it just seems like it's not worth it for someone to take an intro and not be able to get the advanced portion of it. I think we should really offer that.
I think also what happened when I took the director's role, I dropped a period of teaching, so I was teaching it previously. So that's where that period also kind of fell off a little bit.
And is there time in the day for you or another teacher to?
We all have full schedules currently.
Okay.
Thank you, Mrs. Poirier.
Can I ask you one?
Yeah, go ahead, Heidi, I'm sorry.
A question, no, 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 that was, sorry, I was somewhere. I guess a question and a comment. This question is gonna sound really dumb and I apologize, but is someone really schlepping a cart up and down the stairs?
I believe she has two carts, one on each floor.
I was trying to figure out, like, tell me this is not really happening.
She herself is going up and down, but I believe she has two.
I was just trying to figure out how, what we could do to make at least that easy.
That we could purchase if we could.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm sure there's something we can do. Alright, so that's one. This is more, if I may, just plug your department for a minute for you. People here, people at home, if you have not had a chance to go see the artwork, you do not need to be the parent of a child in Beaverbrook to go look at their artwork. The piece posters just came down, they were stunning. The Beaverbrook stuff just went up at the Abington Public Library, right up the road, if you don't know where it is. It is inspiring to see the artwork that these children do. Even better was the amount of parents who came out to help put the artwork up and the discussions and the collaborations between parents and teachers, which doesn't often get to happen when we're talking about things like art and music and those types of classes. So please come out and see the artwork because it lets you look at your child's education in a little bit of a different way and it's really worthwhile. And thank you to your teachers and to the kids for working so hard to create something fabulous.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Poirier.
Thank you.
Need to unplug for a minute. You are very excited, I think. So before Mrs. Doherty gets started, we know that math is and has been an area of growth and concern for our students, staff, and community, particularly at the secondary level. So tonight's presentation will focus on changes in instructional practices as well as programming that we are developing as a district to improve outcomes for our students in coming years, as well as supporting our students where they may have deficits this year and in the next few years. Now I'll turn it over to you. Just a little bit, I'll be back.
Hello and welcome. I'm here to tell you a little bit about the work we've been doing in the math department. I know we're usually here talking about AP and everything else, but we really want to tell you about the exciting stuff that we've been doing. So, here we go. What it is we want our students to be able to do when they have their math education, when they leave out into the real world, as much as I would love them to know the quadratic formula and the Stagrian theorem, and I'm sure you all do, what I really want them to do is to be independent thinkers. I want them to be problem solvers and I want them to be able to persevere. Because as much as I want it to happen, that I want all of them to be mathematicians and I want them all to be engineers, that's not gonna be all our students. So I want them to be able to take a skill out in the real world that's going to help them on everything. So why do we need to change? Times have changed. There's a cell phone in front of kids, their answers are immediately available. Some of you have heard of this little app, maybe, called Photomath, not really sure, which will actually just take a picture and do the workout for the student. So we really need to have to go ahead and, oh, sorry. They know, as much as I like. Photomath. Don't write it down. So we need to find a new way to approach our students and to get them involved and this is what we want to do. So we want to make them think. It's not just about them doing what I'm gonna ask them to do, it's about getting them to think on their own. So what students do a lot of times is mimicking. In other words, I'll do a problem and they'll do a problem right like that, and they want the practice quiz to look just like the real quiz because that's what they're ready for. We're really not teaching them to think, we're teaching them to mimic what I did. Faking, stalling, slacking, prided, any of you who are a teacher knows these attributes, when a kid is just sitting there, or they have to go to the bathroom, or they'll do anything to avoid it. What we want our students to do is we want to give them something to think about. If we're gonna ask them to think, we have to give them something to think about. We have to give them rich tasks that all students can be involved in, that have a low floor and a high ceiling. We want our students to experience the math before they learn it. And problem solving is what we do when we don't know what to do. And that's basically what happens in our real life. We don't know what to do, we have to come up with a solution. So that's really what we want our students to be able to learn. We've been working on this with Dr. Basta. Sure, come on up. Yep. And he's gonna tell you a little bit about our process.
So prior to COVID, we had started a math curriculum review committee here in Abington and then everything stopped. Earlier this year in November, we talked at our MCAS presentation that we were reviving that committee and starting afresh. So the committee includes administrators, many, many math teachers, special educators, and an English language educator. And the objectives of the committee are here, I'm not going to read them all to you. Just wanna make sure they're all up there before I say anything else. So one of the main objectives was to continue the professional development that our grade five to 12 teachers have been receiving, focusing on exactly what Mrs. Doherty was talking about, how do we help our students become problem solvers and think through solutions to novel problems? So that professional development has continued. You've seen that we surveyed families, we surveyed students in grades five through 12, we've surveyed teachers also about math in Abington and where do we want it to go? And we've used that information along with our data about our students over time to help formulate an instructional vision for Abington, to get at exactly what Mrs. Doherty was talking about. So that's linked here in this presentation. This presentation will be posted online and a copy of that vision is in your packet and that's been shared with all of the grade five through 12 math teachers. And where we are right now is we're to the point as a committee where we are piloting. So we've already done those steps. We're in March, we're right on time. So we are piloting several programs that have been identified to meet our needs based on our student data and that vision statement that I just talked about. We're in the process of each math teacher from grade five to 12 being a part of the pilot so that we can identify, are there programs that we either are already using or other programs that are out there that will better meet our goals and help our students achieve and become better problem solvers? So the committee will, not the committee, sorry, all the math teachers are doing that pilot work between now and May and our committee will work as a team in May to review the feedback we've gotten from all the teachers about every program that we've looked at so that in the fall, which is coming up here, in the fall, we would use the existing Abington Public Schools rubric for recommending instructional materials to make a recommendation, if there is one, for a new program that would not, that would be included in the FY25 budget. So this isn't for next year, we'd be in the fall making it a recommendation for the next budget cycle, if that makes sense. Yes?
Just before you move from that slide, does it seem like the surrounding districts, are they all, but do most seem to be on a similar page using the same things, or is everyone kind of doing their own thing?
Do you want to answer that with me? I think, I think yes. Go ahead.
Are you talking about like selection of materials?
Yeah, so when you are kind of looking around to see what programs, materials, just in general, are you finding towns are doing things more in common or differently?
I think what people are really trying to do is stick to the frameworks and they're going to Ed Reports to find the highly recommended materials and starting with those. I think what's different is that seven through 12, you have specialists in the subject, so they feel a little bit more comfortable veering off and doing something on their own, whereas at the elementary, they want a little bit more prescriptive. And so we're trying to find something that fits the best for everybody at grade levels. So what we're trying to avoid is having a different series basically between grade six and grade seven, if possible, to minimize one of those transitions we talked about at MCAS. That is a very difficult thing to do because most programs go six to eight. So that's been one of our biggest hurdles, but we're still working on it.
We have identified some that we can do five to eight or even five to 12.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions about that committee's work or the pilots?
So what are the pilots?
They are, I don't know that I can list them all off the top of my head, can I email that to you?
Yeah, well, a few years ago, when we went through this with ELA, it's like, I feel like we knew every step of the way.
Yeah.
What was going on. And I feel like that's happening at this point with math. So before we, you know, not that we had a big say, but with the three different ELA pilots, we were kinda, each month, I guess, I want to say, we were given some info of how it was going, we were given examples, is there any way that?
Yeah, we can do that for sure. I mean, as I said, we haven't started piloting. It's March to May, so we can definitely, I can email the committee a list.
Okay.
It's slightly different for the different grade levels because of what Meg was describing, but I can email the list to you and then we can provide updates as we go.
Awesome. And can we get the list of what we're using now and then compare?
Sure.
And then why, why is it such a change? Does it have anything to do with like common core or the whole, you know?
No, the series.
Writing a story as you?
No, the.
Do a macro.
There's two different things that are happening. We have the curriculum, the curriculum is pretty steady, it's the Massachusetts frameworks and that's what we're really trying to get at. We're trying to change our disruption. We're trying to change our instruction. And the reason we're trying to change our instructions is because the kids in front of us are not the kids that we have pre-COVID, are not the kids from five years ago, are not the kids from 10 years ago. So we need to go ahead and figure out a way that we can get them thinking and learning in a better way, so that they're not as passive and they're more active in their learning. Does that help? So it's a combination of two, there's the pilot that's going on, that we're trying to figure out what material's going to best fit, and then we have our instructional strategy.
Okay. And when did we, when did we get onto the program that we use now? Like, was each grade level different, or did we get into this math program that we use now, all at the same time for all grades?
We did K-6 and Envisions.
Okay, yeah.
Probably one or second, so seven years ago I would say.
Yeah.
And then we have Big Ideas for the high school that has also been around the same time, and then the middle school has been one last year. So right now for grades seven through 12, we use Big Ideas, except, I'm sorry, seven through 10, basically. We don't use Big Ideas for our pre-calculus, for our calculus, because we don't take it that far. And we use Envisions now for K-6.
And is there an issue with Envisions? Like, are you guys finding anything with the books?
We're going to look at the new version.
Okay.
We'll look at the new version. We just feel like we need to update it.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, we're at the point, and everything's licensed now.
That's what I was going to say. Every program is a two or three-year license, and the publisher is updating their own materials. So we're to the point with, yeah, we're to that point with each one of these programs where our licensure is expiring next year. So we have to either renew with the ones we have, or take advantage of the opportunity to try to find something that better meets our needs.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I do know that we have discussed in the past the fact that there were teachers using supplemental things, and someone was going to be doing a survey of kind of what else is being used to supplement. Have we gotten anywhere in that process? Just because I'm curious, not for me, I'll be curious for you to see what teachers are using most commonly, and can any of that data be used to kind of drive where they want to go in the future? Because if they're finding value in it, aside from the financials, which we absolutely need to think about, are we using, are we spending money we don't need to on supplemental programs? But where's the value in those supplemental programs, and can we drive them towards the curriculum that we're going to use? So are we?
Heidi, like usual, that's a big question.
It is, I'm sorry.
I will give you the shortest answer that I can, that the staff survey that went out had questions about what materials you're using and why are you using them. So we do have that data from teachers. Overall, though, most of the supplementing that's happening is using online materials that we, some of them the district pays for already, and so teachers are using those. And then some of them, teachers are signing up on their own, or they're free. So that's part of this process too, for us to do exactly what you said. Try to find a program so that we can eliminate as much of that supplementing as we can. Not saying that teachers can't supplement, but we don't want them to have to.
It's just kind of, sometimes people find things that are fabulous, and if we can figure out what is making these programs fabulous and making it a little bit more, I don't want to say standard for everybody, everyone, teachers, teaching styles, they all fit a little bit differently, and we want to honor that too. But just, essentially, you answered my question, the survey is still being done in conjunction with kind of working at these pilots, so that's good.
And teachers would love to not have, they would love to have everything there.
Yes.
So that's part of our, we can't find everything, but we're going to try to get pretty close.
Right, perfect, thank you.
Can I ask for more? I'm waiting, sorry. So you had said that, I was assuming it's Pearson and different companies like that that are changing every two to three years, right, you said?
They, they update like a book normally would, they would give you the new copyright, but the difference is now you have to, I can't purchase a book and use it forever. Now I have to purchase a digital license. It might come with a book, but you still need to purchase that digital license. And that digital license, I can buy it as one year, three years, or six years. So either way, I'm stuck. When I first came here years and years ago, I had the same book from a long time before I taught here.
Right.
And it was okay, it was math, math hadn't changed that much. It was really about what I did, the book was for practice. It's so different now, so different now. And so we don't have the option of having a set of books, and we just kind of say, okay, let's move with it. Every six years, we have to revisit.
Is that something that is like coming from the legislature, or the MASCE, or like the, or is it just the book publisher? Is there any pushback?
The book publishers, I would say.
Yeah.
The pushback is that people are trying to go to OERs, which are Open Educated Resources.
I don't know a lot about that.
Well, that's the pushback to the textbook company.
To the textbook company.
I think one of these questions is, is anybody pushing back against the textbook companies?
Yes.
And that's, those are people using open, open resources.
And open resources are available online. Sometimes there's a small subscription fee, or it's free, but it doesn't come with all of the things that Heidi was asking about.
Exactly.
So if we said to our teachers, we're going to use these kinds of resources, now each team or each individual teacher has to create lots of the materials to go with the items that are available online. So it's something that we're also looking at.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Now the fun part.
Are we ready to do the math?
So I'm going to sit down.
Okay, so normally, one of the things we've really been talking about is we've been working our stuff after what we call building thinking classrooms. It's a book by Peter, I can't say his last name because I know it's Swedish. But, one of the things they talk about is having a vertical, non-permanent space, enough place, a way to make mistakes and not have it be a big issue. The other thing we also have is the van and food generator. So every day, kids are in different groups, groups of three, they come up, it's up on the board. To save time, we're not going to do that today. We are going to have our vertical, non-permanent spaces, but people are only going to need two.
Where do you want them?
We're going to put them right on the desk here.
Facing the audience?
Sure, facing the audience.
Oh dear.
You want to stand up? There's not much to be afraid about math.
There's a lot to be afraid about math.
And we're just going to have to get in groups of four for now.
We're working on math problem here.
No, we have it. Math dyslexia.
We're going to finish, she's the numbers lady.
Now Ellie, did you already go here?
Oh, I've done this.
Okay.
I have the numbers lady too.
Okay, we have people over here for our best, different color highlighter expression for him. I'm not a team of one. No, I'm, I'm here with you. We need teams of four. One more over here? I mean, I can sit out here. Nope, 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 we need teams of four.
Was it Danielle, Felicia, Wendy?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ellie's already done it, I guess, so.
The way that you feel right now? Just three minutes. So the way you feel right now is how most of your children feel when they walk into a math classroom, right? If someone puts them on the spot, you can now, they have huge anxiety around it. We try to eliminate that. So this is what we call one of those low-floor activities that everybody can participate in. So you're going to have three minutes to work as a group, and you're going to flip your paper over, and on that paper, there are just numbers. Your job is to circle as many as possible in consecutive order. Anybody tell me what consecutive order is?
One, two, three, four.
Right, so I can't go from one to six, it doesn't work that. Okay, you're going to have three minutes to get as high as you can. That's it. No calculations, no nothing, you're just circling with a highlighter. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Flip the board over. Flip it over, we'll start the timer.
Timer's started.
Oh, it started?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure. Thirty-one?
Eighty-seven.
Nine, eight, three.
Okay, we're going to stop it, and have you ever turned around? We only did two minutes. Just for sake of time. All right, so if everybody turned this way, and don't look at your board. All right, how did we do?
Fifty.
We only got four. That's okay, that's okay. What I'm going to have you do is turn and talk to your group, adjust about what strategy you used. Did you see any pattern? So you can turn back and look at your paper real quick. Okay? Any patterns that you saw? Any strategy? All right, so give me ten seconds warning. All right. Can you guys share what worked, what didn't work? What worked for you? What was something that worked?
We kind of, so, a lot of times we were finding the one, the next one. So we have somebody who have their eyes on that while somebody would find, it was almost accident though. Like, they would find, we're on forty, somebody saw forty-two, like, where's forty-one? We know where forty-two is.
How about you guys?
Yeah, we are. Everyone for a while, you hold on to it until you felt the one.
You came around to it?
Yeah.
Did you guys see any pattern?
We didn't. I mean, not in the moment, for sure.
Okay. So normally, I would do this again. We're going to have you replace, and I'm going to give you one hint. Like I said, normally, we would do this again. The point of the colored markers is that you can hopefully see, depending on where you're standing. And I am going to give you a hint, and that hint is, try to look in a grid. See if that helps. Try to look in a grid.
Oh my gosh.
All right, start that timer. She said, she's got to go. New one up. Okay, ready? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve, thirteen. You got it? Yeah. Twelve, thirteen, can we have a go? Thirteen. Where's my fourteen? Fourteen. I just lost the grid. How about sixteen, seventeen?
One minute left.
That's two minutes.
All right, mark it down. All right, so, what was different this time? Holy moly.
Great work, wow.
Great work, plus we're having a hint, so if you had other people see that, we would normally do this two or three times, so people kind of saw the pattern that would happen, and then they would go share with everybody. Was it intimidating?
No.
Was it something everybody could participate in? So one of the rules I do give to kids is that everybody has to have a colored marker on, I do need to see everybody's colored marker on the thing the first time, so that we know everybody's participating. It's a great way for kids to get introduced to math, to be able to set our group norm. In other words, we would use this and jump off it and say, what is good group work look like? So that, we can set that up for the rest of the year. It is something that we did with almost every high school kid at the beginning of this year, instead of not necessarily get to know me, we just kind of put them in groups and get to know each other. The goal is that the last person you hear from is me, and that I want you to figure it out first. And then, we incorporate this into our curriculum, so we start doing tasks within our curriculum this way, instead of just problem solving. So that's a little bit of what the kids are doing, what we're trying to do for grades five through 12, and we just want to share it with you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. So, real quick, we just have a couple of slides. This first one, we just wanted to revisit, we revis, we talked about it at MCAS, what supports we currently have in place for our kids. We have the Math Interventionist that serves 120 kids in grades five through eight. Not only do they have small group pull-out, but they go into the classrooms of those students. The middle school also has an after-school boost program. At the high school, we have Bridge Block, we have MCAS tutoring, we have an ACE program after school for help, National Honor Society Students Tutor, as well as, we are always here after school, and that's what people forget. If your child is struggling, send them after school. As wonderful as Bridge Block is, it's not one-on-one. What I can do in 10 minutes, having a conversation with your child, could lessen so much frustration for them, so please encourage them to come stay after school. And on top of that, we have computer science, which is fantastic. We actually have a robotics, let me see if I can say it right, engineering and robotics club this year. And they run it as a company, so it's C-level. So we don't have a president, we have a CEO. We have a COO, we have a CFO, we have, so they're learning about business as well. And they have three 3D printers going at once that the kids are designing. And we're looking to make this into one of our courses for next year, which you've seen come across in program studies. Any questions? I can.
That was great, thank you.
Yeah, that was awesome. Sorry.
Thank you very much. Everybody's up again.
Okay, if you're all recovered from your math anxiety, I have a few awards to bring your attention to, and I'm going to read from my script to make sure that it says everything I need to say. So I'm excited to announce that the nomination form for the Chester Millet Jr. Outstanding Teacher and Educational Support Personnel will be opening on March 15th. Honoring former Superintendent Chet Millet Jr., the awards are to be presented annually by the Abington School Committee to a teacher and educational support person who by their performance has demonstrated a willingness to assume responsibilities and perform deeds well above and beyond those normally expected, thereby distinguishing them by their great examples, dedication, perseverance, and commitment to helping students. On March 15th, a Constant Contact announcement will be sent to the community with a link to that nomination form. It will also be available on the APS website. You may nominate more than one person, but a new form must be completed for each nominee. The form will close on Sunday, April 2nd at midnight, no later, no earlier. After identifying names and information from the nominations have been removed, a committee of parents, staff, and administrators will meet to review the nominations the week of April 24th. I'm also looking for a member of the school committee to be a part of the committee. So if anybody is interested in that, you can email me. The teacher and educational support person who are selected for the awards this year by the committee will be announced during Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week in May. We're always excited to recognize excellence in education right here in Abington with this award. I highly encourage staff, students, families, and the entire community to make nominations. If there are any questions about that award?
Of course, I would just ask if anybody's interested to let me know, and I'll let you know.
Perfect.
It's multiple people, okay?
Perfect. Moving on to award number two. In memory of Deirdre Zakardi, the Deirdre Volunteer Service Award was published by the townwide PTO this morning. You may have seen the Constant Contact. The award was a The award was established in memory of Deirdre's devotion as an active Abington Public School parent volunteer. Annually, the award recognizes a caregiver in town who volunteers to service, who volunteers in service activities that improve the Abington Public Schools and the school community. Again, we encourage community members to follow the link in the email from this morning to nominate a deserving volunteer. Any questions about that award? Okay. And the last award on the docket. By committee policy, I need to request your approval to participate in a DESI Pilot Student Award Program. The DESI Student Achievement Award was designed to recognize high-achieving, high-need students who scored exceeding expectations in ELA or math in any grade level on the two thousand twenty-two MCAS. About twenty-five Abington students have been identified by DESI to receive this Student Achievement Award. The award packets can each contain, I have a sample here, a certificate of achievement, a letter of recognition, recognition from the commissioner. This one's fun. A Target gift card, and information, uh, to help families support their students' growth at home. So, on behalf of DESI, the administrators at each impacted school, which would be Woodsdale, the middle school, and the high school, would like to send the award packets home with students in the coming week. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about that program.
Please, a high-achieving, high-need student.
Exactly.
Does anybody in the committee have any questions, or Dr. Ross about it?
If not, I'll be looking for a motion to approve participation in the DESI Student Achievement Award.
I'll make a motion to participate.
A second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, report of the Superintendent of Schools, Mr. Shaper.
So I have some quadratic equations that I guess the committee, take a look at with me. Everybody grab a board.
I quit.
Yay.
Uh, what I'd like to do is, um, we've got, uh, we had search, we had a search process in place for, I think you're aware, um, the Beaverbrook Principal and the High School Assistant Principal. We used, uh, search committees, um, to recommend finalist candidates. We did finalist interviews. Um, I'm excited about the people that I'm able to introduce to you, who you already know very well. Um, they did very well in the process. Um, and, um, I have every faith and confidence in the world that they're gonna, they've excelled in everything we've asked them to do in Abington, and I have every faith that they will continue to do that for the kids that we serve. So, I'd like to start by introducing you to your principal at the Beaverbrook Elementary School, Julie Thompson.
Thank you, I just wanna say that I'm honored to continue serving the students, staff, and families of Beaverbrook, and I'm very excited for what's to come. Thank you.
Congratulations, Julie.
Congratulations.
And not only somebody who's worked with us for a long time, but also an Abington High School graduate, Kate Casey. Sorry, Assistant Principal of High School, Kate Casey.
I just, I'm very excited by this new opportunity, uh, for myself. Uh, I have a lot of people to thank for helping me get to this point in my educational, now administrative career. And there's quite a few faces in the crowd and in front of me that have gotten me to this point, so thank you all. Um, and, uh, as Mr. Shaper mentioned, I am an Abington grad. Um, I have a lot of pride for this town, so I'm excited to be able to give back to the town that has given me so much, um, as a student here. So, thank you.
Congratulations.
Can I just say that it is so impressive to have so many people wanting to stay in Abington? I know we have a great community, but it is so awesome to see people wanting to keep their talents here. And we're very grateful to have you. It says so much about our community, and I'm really proud of that.
Thank you. So, I think you know that REEDS Collaborative is, um, a collaborative that we're members of. Um, in your packet, you have changes to their, um, charter, call it, to their, to their policy document, um, about how they are able to function. Um, this had to be vetted through legal counsel. It had to be also approved by the Department of Education. Um, the changes you have in your packet are highlighted in pink, and I'm not gonna, I'll, I'll stop anywhere you want. Um, the Collaborative serves the member districts by providing support to a small number of special need students with significant needs. Now, we don't at any time have large numbers of students at REEDS Collaborative, because the care that they provide is very specialized. Um, so, the number that we have there is, is fluid. We use them quite a bit for diagnostic services, um, probably more than their programming. But that doesn't mean that we wouldn't use them for their programming when the need arises, if it's the best placement for the students we serve. So, they're required, because we're a member district, to get your approval on, uh, some of the changes that you see in this document that are highlighted in pink. You'll notice that most of them are, are pretty much administrative in nature. They're, they're already, if you remember, there are things that you've already approved in the past about, um, how money can, um, uh, be used, and I'll, I'll get into that a little bit later. Um, they've done a better job on, on page two of, of describing their, their mission. Those really aren't necessarily policy or procedural things. They're really, again, administrative, um, pieces where they're just trying to be consistent with their language and more descriptive. Uh, I don't see anything there as something that jumps out as to me as, um, all that big a change. So, but I will slow down anywhere you want me to go, anywhere you'd like. Similarly with page three, um, for example, number four on page three outlines the process that they use to the Executive Committee, um, which I'm a member of. I've served as president before of this board. Um, this is, this number four is exactly the process that they've used throughout the years. It just hasn't been in the, in the document, so they, they put it in the document.
I actually did have a question on section three, page two, number one, and it just, is there a list when they, the change, where it says approved public? Um, I'm sure that's just a clarifying language, but is, who creates the, do they create their own list of approved public? Or is it, it's a strange question, I know, but the fact that they had to clarify that language, I just had a question.
James may need to help me with it. Um, approved means that it's approved for placements for Massachusetts students. And the day, uh, school placements can change periodically depending on the needs of the member districts and the disabilities that the students are trying to serve. How'd I do?
Oh, great, great, yeah, there's, there's an operational service division that just makes sure that all these, um, collaboratives adhere to state regulations and they adhere, uh, to the tuitions that, um, state and things like that. So, um, I think that's, uh, they meet all the state criteria and everything's approved.
If you missed that at home, uh, he said I did great.
It's like you're already on your way out here.
It'll be here all night. Sorry, I just totally threw your rhythm off.
No, 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 if there are other, if there are other items...
Do you want me to ask you the other one I have written down already?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, page six, section seven. Finance.
The Board shall vote annually to establish the rate non-member surcharge.
Yeah, the, um, the not to exceed the twenty-five percent, was there a previous standard, or was this just more...
I, I think it was, I believe it was in the teens, I wanna say it was about fifteen percent, and other collaboratives, um, raised their rate for non-member districts, and I believe that REEDS Collaborative wanted to follow suit. This wouldn't affect us in any way, these are for districts that aren't, um, members.
Right. I just wanted to make sure that people on both sides were being thought of. It, it was more just kind of why they suddenly had set a specific rate, so, and...
That's something that they have to bring, um, you know, to get approved if they're, if they're gonna change. Um, and again, I think they're just trying to put it in their, um, documents so that it's...
Right, and the other one was, uh, the page eight, number three. If money, if funds are returned, where do they go?
So this has been something that, that the committee has voted on annually.
Yep.
Um, what this does is, it formalizes this, the process that they've been using. Um, the money, I believe it's going to, is it going to OPEB? Yeah, the retireme, the retirement, yep, the, uh, the retiree benefits. Um, that's a liability that they have to, um, account for. Um, it's a, it's a retirement benefit that a lot, the, the towns, um, have to account for. And so the money would go into that account. We're talking for Abington, several thousand dollars. Uh, maybe, maybe the max would be ten thousand dollars. Um, again, most of that money would be for diagnostic services if we didn't use... So every year they ask us how many, uh, slots that we anticipate using. At REEDS, for di, for diagnostic services, that's, that's our cost, um, for being a member. And so if there's a surplus in there, this just describes where it goes.
Perfect, thank you.
The one that I did wanna mention is on page eleven, about the timeline. Um, this is a, I think, a bigger change, but I don't think it's a bigger deal, um, the procedure and timeline for admitting new member districts. Um, previously it was, uh, I believe it was all member districts had to approve, and then they changed this to a majority vote of the entire Executive Board, and then subject to approval, two-thirds by the member school committees, who are from the towns that are members. I think they wanna change the threshold.
Okay.
And then, the last one is the procedure for terminating the collaborative agreement. I don't anticipate that we would ever wanna terminate our agreement with them. I mean, anything's possible, but I don't, I don't see a reason why we would. Again, because, um, we benefit from the diagnostic services, and we can use those as we need. We don't have to send students there. Um, we can, we're free to send them wherever they, wherever we need to send them, to meet their needs. If they have a program that we don't feel is, um, adequate for our students, we don't have to send them. So, we wouldn't necessarily just leave, because you never know when you want the opportunity to go back and use its services.
And I'm forced to use it.
Right. Right. So, um, this just describes the process, uh, by which a district would be able to leave. So we can, I could, I could ask you if you'd be, you know, wanna vote this night, if you're comfortable voting it tonight, or we can delay it, whatever the committee feels appropriate.
Anybody have any questions? I'm okay to...
I'm good to vote on it, I, I asked all my questions.
So it's just a motion to approve the amendments, right? So I'll make, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the REEDS Collaborative amendments as presented.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Um, not, yeah, up next is the Report of Policy Subcommittee Review of KEC Challenge Education Materials. Um, so, just to clarify some things, right, there seem, seem to be some debate confusion based on some emails I've received, how any, how any policy comes about coming in front of the board, so I'm just gonna kind of give that update. So as such as a, so there's a lot of things that we have subcommittees for. One of them is policy. Um, so whenever there's a proposal to change a poli, policy, there's a subcommittee for the budget. Um, that subcommittee will meet, and they'll discuss the potential impacts of changes, and what, what comes forward is what will, what will be discussed at our meeting. Um, gen, so there can be one or two people on a subcommittee, there can't be more than two. There is two on the policy subcommittee. What, basically, if the policy subcommittee completely agrees, it's pretty much gonna come to the full committee. If we both disagreed on something that was kind of in there, it usually would never make it to. And there were things that were discussed that we both agreed didn't make sense to be in here. So nobody's seeing that at this time. Um, and in this case, there's some things that are split, and Wendy and I are the subcommittee. We can give our feedback as to where we felt on certain things. And then, any change that's gonna happen is a majority vote of the entire committee. So three out of five, in the case that's all five are here tonight. I just wanted to, there was, I saw a bunch of emails that I got regarding what's the process, so I just wanted to lay out the process for any of our subcommittees really, any changes that wanna come forward from our subcommittees. Um, there are, I made the decision that we're gonna vote each one of the one, two, three, four, they're in bold, the five changes separately. Um, because I don't think, like, I, I don't fully support all five of them. So I didn't wanna do all, like, all of them at once. We're gonna take one at a time, and we will, the committee can make a motion to approve, or if there is no motion, it just doesn't get changed. Or if there's a motion to approve and it gets voted down, it doesn't get changed. So that's kind of where we are with it. Can make amendments to what's on here. Um, so, if there's no other questions, Wendy, did you wanna add anything before we started?
Um, just that, uh, once we go through each one, with the amendment that was, that you proposed, if we could talk about that?
Yeah.
Um, and then...
Talk about every single one before we vote on it, for sure, yeah.
Okay, I think that we should probably talk about Acadia's, uh, request as well. I mean, I think it's a great request, so...
Um, we can, I don't know if I'm comfortable on voting on it, I can say that myself, so...
I have a question then, just on the process, so, you guys met, you have your suggestions. So if, if other people, Acadia, anybody on the board also has a suggestion, is that something that we talk about here, or does that go back to the, to like, who...
It usually goes through the policy subcommittee, which is why I suggested maybe waiting on Acadia's stuff until after.
So we can run out what's in here, but then you guys could come back with other...
Correct, we could, yes.
Or you can, if you have something.
If we have it now, though, I mean, it's, it's open, this is open now, if somebody wants to go with it, that's, um, fine.
And, just more generally, as a committee, do you guys only look at policies like if it comes up? Or do you, as a committee, have the right, that's not the right word, but, do you, could you just sit and meet on any policy, even if it hasn't been discussed here and bring it to us? Is that how...
Yeah, we could, but generally speaking, when we meet, it's because there's a, at least in my, from my way of going, like, when it, which usually we meet when there's something to talk about changing, so.
So is it an irregular review of our poli, like, there, is there like a, a calendar cycle of like, a regular review of our policies that you guys are doing now?
We have brought, we...
Yeah.
We have brought suggested changes before, whether it's from council or whomever, about, when we hear about recent updates in policies.
And in two thousand and fifteen, I wanna say, we went through the whole book.
I was gonna say, I think there was a, a full policy review, which means we're probably close to being there again.
That's why a lot of these say two thousand and fifteen, because that's when the...
Yep.
Okay.
And that was with the MAS, this policy subcommittee, you, I think that was it, that was on it, and that was brought.
Was that at our discretion, or was it recommended?
That was right before I got on, and then I got on to... So you guys were already working on it, or just starting to, and then I got on to that committee?
We had a committee member, um, who was interested in having an entire policy manual update and review, um, for a lot of procedures that were, um, needed updating, and so we did.
Okay. 'Cause I think the last time before that, it was around two thousand and ten. So, it, this would probably have to be gone through again, considering that, you know, everything's still digital.
Uh, 'cause I will admit, I was surprised when I realized that it was all two thousand and fifteen.
Yeah.
It's no small undertaking, for sure, but...
But Peter is very good with coming to us, you know, every time that there's, um, an update that we should probably go through.
So are we doing, so, I'm assuming you can't do this as a straight up and down, because, so are we gonna vote on each?
Yes, that's my plan, because, um, there's some things, I mean, personally, there's some things that unanimously came out of the subcommittee meeting as approving, some things didn't. So, I mean, if we're gonna vote the whole thing, then, then we could, but I think it makes more sense personally to vote on each individual thing. If anybody has an objection, you can let me know. So, alright, so, we're, so starting off, so, despite caretaking of select materials, including library books that are needed and appropriate for use in the Abington Public Schools, so, the first change would be to in, insert the phrase "including library books."
I, I feel the responsibility, it's my job to make a recommendation on each of these, and then sit back and let the democratic, the democratic process play out. It's, you know, if I could give you a recommendation, doesn't mean that you have to go with a recommendation. Um, but I think it's my job. And then, you know, discussion goes where it goes. So, my recommendation on this is, we, we've already used this policy for that process, that this would now, this would be a, we've already set that precedent, and we... And we, through legal counsel and investigations prior to using this policy. This, this was the policy best suited for the discussion that we had. So I, I don't think, I think I would recommend that that change would be fine.
And I was also okay with it because of the same exact reasons that you were just saying. We've already set the precedent that this policy does include library books, in my opinion. And our legal counsel, when we asked him about what po, this is what he, this is the policy he told us that we should use for it. So to me, it was more seeming obvious than anything else. So I'm, I recommend, I think, and I don't want to speak for Wendy, but I think we both recommended passage of this part of it. So I don't think, Wendy, did you want to add anything to that or no?
No, I, just, just to make it clear. And all this is, is bringing, for bringing, you know, to bring this up is just to clear the lines. Because I think in the beginning, there was a lot of interpretation of what was happening, so.
Agreed. Any discussion on it by the committee?
I mean, I, so I will say, I wish this hadn't been what had, the precedent had been set on. Because I think it is very important to make a distinction between curricular materials and then library books. Library materials can be used as curricular supplements. But there's also a, there's a different way that library books are viewed, used, handled within a school situation. You know, even the way that the public can access the information. Sitting at home, using a catalog to see what's there, there might be materials that have the appearance of being something that shouldn't be on a shelf. But are in fact on a shelf because they support, say, a unit on Holocaust or a. So that is my big reservation about having that phrase in here. Is that there is a distinct difference and that is why libraries use. The, the way they go about book selection is very defined. So that they're not just, library books aren't necessarily used by all, but they might be used by some for specific purposes. That's my big reservation about having that in here.
Okay. I don't necessarily disagree with you, I think, but even if it's not there, I feel like, I, I think like my thing is where it was, the precedent's already been set. Where if, if somebody wanted to challenge it, we would, we would almost have to based on our legal advice too, if nothing else at this point. Unless there was another policy regarding library books, I, so.
So if our lawyer is telling us that this is a good idea?
Not a good, he didn't say it was, not a good idea.
Or not a good idea, if it's.
He just stated, when, when the question came up about the challenge of the book before, it was. He, his, he said it could be challenged under this because there's nothing else that we have that covers library books. So it falls under this by default almost, at the, at this moment in time.
And this is what other districts use for this, for similar challenges.
That was my next question.
And I'm not, like I said, I'm not trying to sway, I'm just giving my reason on being okay with it, so.
No, no, I.
And recommending it.
Maybe not exactly this, but it's very similar. This is a very, this has been a very similar process to other districts.
And I knew that this was going to be something that I might not be in the majority thought on this one.
That's okay. Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
Their side of things, or, you know, just so that it's more even. Because it seems that, like a lot of teachers, or not a lot, but administrators, whatever, they may sway one way. When, you know, some parents may sway the other. It's just to kind of put a little bit more equal.
Right, but again, is it that this person can make a suggestion and the superintendent has the authority to say, thanks, but no thanks? Or are we saying if we add this, this person gets to appoint someone to the committee? Or is it still going to be superintendent's discretion?
No, they, the superintendent can, can seek, they can provide, okay, I'll let you.
Number three. Yeah, says that the superintendent will establish the committee. And so I think, you know, I know that that means the superintendent has the authority to establish that committee. And as long as I've ever worked, you know, in this role, I've always wanted, everybody's input. Doesn't mean that you have to take it, but you want to listen to everybody. And so if this were added, I don't see that this undermines the superintendent's authority to establish the committee. Whoever the superintendent might be.
Can I look for, can I just ask for clarification on the use of the word who? Are we talking specific name? I would like to see this person name or someone who's representing a certain community?
I mean, can the person making that challenge talk to the superintendent about, I mean, I don't really want to. It's going to be a private conversation between the superintendent and that person. And in the end, the superintendent's going to decide who is on there anyway. So it could be a name, it could, I mean, in my mind, I, the private conversation can be whatever it is. I, like, neither, I, we, we didn't want to undermine the authority of, in the end, the superintendent gets to decide who it is. But in this case, I'm, I'm, the policy essentially allows the person making a challenge to give some input on who, what kind of. I, I mean, I don't know. I, I really can't define that, I don't think, Heidi.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering if, if that had been.
I mean, that will never be, I mean, so whatever conversation happens, it would never be public, right? That would be, I mean, because in the end, Peter does, like, I believe the names come out who's on here. So whoever was, we would never really know if, I mean, he could answer if, but we wouldn't know if he just, if somebody he suggested. In the end, that's who he's comfortable with appointing by whatever means that the superintendent goes about it.
So the superintendent would have full, you know, final authority, but he's just talking to.
Yeah, no, I was more trying to just figure out, we were thinking like, give me a name of an individual. Or we would like to have someone who represents.
I think this means it can be both. It could be either one.
You know, it could be.
Right.
I was, and so this, just so the full committee knows, we were unanimous in, in bringing this forward to the entire committee. I, I may just want to take out the word resident and put in person, because I do believe, are staff members allowed to challenge?
No, I believe it's a resident or parent.
Okay, then, so we can keep resident, that's, that's fine then.
I just wanted to say, we might not all like each other's opinions, but I think it's really important to have that diversity if it's there. And to give that person at least a chance to have a conversation with the superintendent.
Just thinking, yeah, I agree. And I'm wondering too about that, now that you just brought up resident. What if the person that is bringing, you know, the complaint? And they have somebody that is like, I don't know, a doctor and science books or something, do you know what I mean? Like, so should it just be somebody that lives in this town? Or could it possibly be somebody that the person that's bringing the challenge thinks, you know, might have some really good ideas of, of.
I think the input is given by the resident.
Yes, the input's given by the resident, a member of the community, I think.
I think it's just stay within the community.
In the town. Yeah, I'm, I'm not just bothered.
So any other discussion on this?
I mean, I'm not like totally against it. I think it's a little bit redundant to put it in there. I think the person, by bringing forward the challenge, the person's already having that conversation with the superintendent. I mean, again, not a hill I'm going to die on, but I don't, I don't see the necessity of having it in there, but.
I understand. Any other discussion on it? So I'll be looking for a motion to include the words after three point five. So it currently reads, a member of the community not involved in the challenge of the material. And then the, the addition would be, input on who is designated can be provided by the resident making the challenge. I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Uh, no.
Four to one. Three point six, do you want, wait, do you want me to change the way? Alright, so in it, this was email discussion, didn't get, it wasn't, we, we didn't get a chance to kind of confirm before we, this was had to be printed. So we have an amendment to this. It's, it actually isn't going to be three point six, it'd probably be four at this point. Because it doesn't involve somebody being in the review committee. So I'm going to amend this to say, and I am, and I, this is, this would be unanimous from the subcommittee as well. That the resident citizen that challenged the material can address the review committee at the start of their review, but is not part of the review process. So they're essentially allowed to give their reasoning to that review committee in their own words, not just on a paper. What their reasoning is, but then they have to leave us, they already have their opinion on it. They're not going to. And quite frankly, when, I think it was just not thinking it, like, partly thinking it through when adding it there, not thinking that they already have the decision. So we did talk about it and that was kind of an amendment that made to it. Not necessarily on the fly, we did it, we talked, the email about the change to it, but we weren't good with it to print, in time to print this for Friday.
So in addition to whatever written appeal they submit, they can also speak in front of the review committee?
Correct, but they're not part of the review committee. They're not, they're not there when the review and reconsideration takes place. So it's almost, it wouldn't be like three point six, because three is, the members would almost be, become four.
So like a four point one?
Or oh, and the next one becomes five, six, seven, whatever.
Ah, see, okay.
It's its own thing. It's not part of, of the, that's all, so.
I mean, I think it's a really good idea because, you know, once the committee's formed and, I don't know how, you know, if, hell it worked. Whether everybody met at first and then they separated, but if they all, yeah.
They did, they met first, they all, they, uh, they were.
Right, so, so essentially we were tasked with, basically, A, reading the material. B, understanding what the concern in the challenge was and how to go about looking at it in its entirety. So we were given the bullet points of how to, I guess, faithfully make a determination. And then everyone came back a week later, having read the book to have the discussion. And I mean, not everybody was always, you know, there were some really fabulous points on different sides were made. So I would say three point six is the way it was written here. I far prefer what you guys just handed us. That to me, I think it's okay to, people have different viewpoints.
Right, exactly.
Okay to allow people to hear them.
And tone is tough on paper.
Tone is extremely tough on paper.
So I think if they just have a chance to, that, that was the idea. That was the idea, I mean, that was honestly the idea about even being there. It just kind of got put in the wrong spot in the, in our meeting kind of thing, so.
Now devil's advocate here, I'm just wondering if, if the person who is currently using the material or is acting, I guess, in defense of the material, the person who has provided the material, are they afforded the same opportunity?
So for example, if a parent questioned material that a teacher was using, it could be anybody. But in that situation, the teacher would also have the right to come stand in front of the committee before they go.
I think that could work in that situation, but otherwise, like, with the previous book challenge, like, who would be that person to speak in favor? Do you know what I mean? Because there wasn't.
It would be situational.
Yeah, I think situational too, and then.
It could probably, wouldn't apply to library books, but could apply to classroom material, I would think.
I don't think listening to people is a problem.
I just want to.
Yeah, so that's my, I mean.
I'm not, I'm not a huge fan of overdicting policy, if that makes sense. I think sometimes you can get tied up in your own rope if you do that.
Yes, yeah.
However, I, it might be worth revisiting if we are going to afford that opportunity to a complaint. Are we also, or a challenger, I should say, excuse that. We should offer a similar opportunity to the person who either procured the material in the first place or feels strongly about why it should stay.
Yeah, I don't, I, I'm more, honestly, I'm trying to think how to exactly word that. On the fly is what I'm kind of trying to think of, so.
Did I just make life really difficult?
That's how my. Round to argument maybe, you could, by the staff who was involved in the procurement of the materials. Procurement or might have been done before someone got here. So kind of argument maybe provided by a staff member involved in the procurement or curation of the materials.
Yeah, and I think even if we say it is opportunity is available, it doesn't mean that everyone has to avail themselves.
So that, yeah, none of this is required. Yeah, so that's why the word can is there, this is not required.
Right, if you have library books, see how like the librarians would be forced to come to the field meeting after a field meeting to defend, you know, the decision.
They may have an opportunity, but they would want to.
But they, people will have the opportunity for.
That's true, yeah, it's just an opportunity, yeah, okay.
The person, the person making the challenge and the person using the material as a resource may be heard by the review committee. What was that? I'm sorry. The person making the challenge or the person using the material may be heard by the review committee.
Might not be used, the material, so that, in the course of a library book.
Danielle, good luck with these minutes.
But there's already a library media specialist on the review committee.
But, but in this case, we didn't use the library media specialist who put the book in the library for that reason. Because we looked at them as the same as the teacher using, this is the librarian's classroom.
We also don't want to presuppose that, that one library media specialist is going to feel the same way as potentially another, as far as.
Yeah.
You know, I.
Trying to adhere to this policy as best we could, Trish London was not a part of this review committee.
But she could speak, yeah, if she wanted to, with this new change.
I, I like the way this is shaping up actually.
Let me try to phrase something and I'll let you guys know. You guys tell me what you think. So Danielle, make sure you listen to this part.
It's recorded.
So the resident that challenged the material can address the, can address the review committee at the start of the review. The staff member using the material may also address the, the review committee at the start of the review. Neither are representative in the, in the review committee.
Yeah, I'm not sure you, the staff member using it though, because someone, like, nobody was actually using this book as gay, but it was challenged. So who would be?
A curator.
Curate, yeah, like, so like. I think there's a different word for using.
I'm not going to remember what I just said, say again.
I don't want to say or in possession of, but.
The person providing the resource?
Offering, providing.
A staff member who was responsible for procuring.
Providing the resource?
Providing, procuring the material, yeah.
Right, because it may be prior to them starting.
Or even in the case of this book, it, it wasn't even necessarily being provided. It was sitting on a shelf. No one was saying, here, you can use.
Right, somebody brought it in initially, but it wasn't being used.
In, in charge of the department, I don't know.
Procure, procuring or using?
Managing access to.
Managing access to. You know, I think at the end of the day, in anything like this, the number one thing people want to be able to do is to be heard. And you can't, it's not always easy to be heard and understood. In a time when, especially if you feel like you are up against.
How is this sound?
A tidal wave. So I think it's fair.
Yeah, the, the resident challenging the material, as well as the staff in charge of procurement of the material, can address the review committee prior to their reconsideration. Does that sound okay?
How about in charge of procurement or use?
Sure.
Procurement and use, yep.
So.
That, that came from some of your mouth, the audience.
So this would be number four point O. So we don't have to mention that they're not part of the committee because we've, it's not part of that group. Can you, I'm not going to remember it. So. Yeah.
Danielle have it?
So to, to make, to change, to introduce four point O to this policy. I'm going to make the motion, the resident challenging the material, as well as staff in charge of procurement or use of the material, can address the review committee prior to their reconsideration. That's my motion.
For a second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank God.
And then three point six is what you want?
Three point six becomes four point O. Because it's not part of three, you know what I mean? Um, the last one we had is on the back, it's number nine. The school committee will read the library material in question in order to make an informed decision. This would come after the school committee would receive a, a written appeal of the superintendent's decision. So we were split on this. I did not favor this. One, I'm, we're all volunteers, I mean, that was the basis of it. If you, if you can, great, I don't wanna legislate that you do, and also, part of me is saying that whatever the material that comes in front of us, our decision in the end is, are we upholding or reversing the superintendent's decision? We're not necessarily making, and that goes back to the phrasing of the motion way back when, so I was opposed to, um, this, and I'll let, Wendy, if you wanna add anything, or if the rest of the committee wants to discuss it.
I, yeah, I mean, I feel that if we're gonna make a decision, um, you know, if we had, I think it was Mr. DeVito, I'm not sure, that said that, um, the committee doesn't have to read, uh, the person that is presenting the book doesn't have to read it in its entirety. So, well, that's what he's assuming, that the person didn't read it in its entirety, so if that person's expected to read it, then why shouldn't we be expected to read it, and, I mean, I think that too, like, if, you know, in the beginning of this, we had, um, all sorts of different ideas of how this was going to go down, and then you had, like, you know, some people reaching out via email and saying, oh, uh, you know, I don't think this book belongs in, I'm saying committee members, I don't think this book belongs in, uh, the schools either, and then, you know, when it comes down to having a vote, it was completely different. So I think that it just kinda holds us to it, it's part of, I think it should be part of our job, I mean, it's, the K E C, the School Challenge Educational Materials, the form, um, I don't think anybody thought that, you know, we'd get to where we are today, but, I mean, with everything coming, and I, I don't know, I just think that if we're supposed to, like, say that we approve what you say, or what anybody on the review committee says, then we should have some aspect of no, some knowledge of the book, other than what was, you know, what's hearsay, or what somebody else, you know, in a publication, on a newspaper, or blog, or whatever, writes. I mean, it's just the best, to me, the most informative thing, in my opinion.
So, I, I think philosophically, I think everyone who has an opinion about anything that's written should read it before they have an opinion on it. But that doesn't mean you can make someone read a book.
No, I agree, and that's why it's saying, um, oh, didn't we, weren't we going to say will, instead of will read? Wasn't there a different word, um, Chris, that we were thinking of?
Um, I honestly don't remember, if it's a different word, I might be okay with it, to be honest with you.
Yeah, I don't think it was will, I think it was like, well, that it's recommended.
That's fine, man.
Yeah, I think that's what we, uh, we had discussed, that it's recommended that the school committee read the book.
I'm okay with that.
I agree with Chris, I mean, if you change it to recommended, I guess that's fine, but, you know, going back to the beginning of this, you know, I think, for me, it wasn't so much about whether I am okay with or not okay with the book, I supported Peter's decision when he removed it, because he thought that was the right thing to do, and then I supported him when he went back and read it and decided the right thing to do is to put it back. I like to read, I don't have a problem reading, I'll read books, even if it's not required, but I agree with Chris, I think the role of the committee in the appeal process is that I, I'm not, I, I don't really think it, it matters what my opinion of the book is, if seven other people have read it and made a decision, especially if that decision was six to one, or whatever it was, um, to me, that seems, like, I don't, I trust the people that Peter appointed to the committee. So again, not the end of the world, but I just, I don't think it's necessary.
I have some trust in the committee, but again, it's basically, um, you know, one sided, and that's just to kinda, you know, if the people that are picked for the committee, you know, basically work for the school system, we don't work for the schools, like, we're the outsider, we're the representation of everyone, so, um, and that's why we're all different, you know.
I mean, there is a member of the school committee on it.
Yeah, a member of the committee not involved.
Yes, yes.
As well as a member of the community, that, so there's two of them anyway that don't work for the district.
Yeah, I don't think that just because you're a part of the school system, that means you're automatically going to.
Yeah, but, well.
It could be biased, because like, if I brought a complaint against a book that most people support, like, then I could say it'd be biased, like, I just, I, I don't know, I think that I, I don't see that as a concern, like you do, that's all I'll say, but.
I looked at this a little differently, and I think, I, I spent a lot of time looking at everything for how could this work in someone's favor, and how could this spectacularly work against them? And, one of the things that, just as it's written here, um, if someone decided that, if, I don't know if we have it here in the school, that, um, war and peace should be challenged, mainly because they want to essentially force a hand to make us all read War and Peace, um, which I, you know, it's one of those things that it sounds silly, but if people really wanted to take a system and work it in a way that made it very unwieldy, that would be a good one to do, which is why.
Right.
I understand in theory and in practice, it's why I read the book, which shall not be named, three different times, um, because I, I want to honor the position in which I have here, and I wanna do justice to what I'm doing. I just am very hesitant to put it in writing in this manner, because I can't see where it could conceivably work against a future committee, and I'm not talking here, I am talking down the road, that's all.
I mean, hi, just, I mean, to that end, I mean, the policy is as good for the moment in time it's approved, it can be, if it becomes, so, if, if any policy becomes a mockery, then we could be right back here trying to adjust it to prevent that mockery at the same time, so, yeah, so.
Can I, so, although our superintendent is very smart and thoughtful, um, I wouldn't wanna ever say that I would blindly support any decisions, I would wanna make an informed decision, so I would wanna read the book, but, like Heidi said, whether it's war or peace, or twenty different people bringing twenty different books, or one person bringing fifty books, whatever it is, um, one book or a lot. Um, I, I can't commit to reading that many books as a volunteer, if that was something that ever happened, so, that was one piece. Although I would want to make that informed, if, if we were voting, I would wanna read the book. I also wondering about, it says, the school committee will read library material, what happens if it's curriculum that's challenged, and not a library book?
It wouldn't be, this, this is an ad, this isn't, there's nothing there to begin with, so it's an ad, it only would cover library books.
That's right, that's right. And I, I really think that, um, will read was changed at that time to.
Something recommended the school committee reads library material in question?
Right, it wasn't like you had to do it just because of what everyone was saying, like, not having the time.
So, Wendy, if we say, recommend, recommend the school committee reads library material in question?
Yes.
Okay.
The school committee is recommended to, yeah.
It's recommended.
It's recommended the school committee reads library material in question in order to make an informed decision.
Yeah.
So if we, we amend it to that, and then, if there's no more discussion, I'm looking for a motion to, um, add that line into the policy.
I'd like to make the motion.
Is a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No?
No.
Fails two to three.
So what about adding a student?
Yeah?
Take a shot at that?
Yep.
Okay, this is, okay, this is about what, you, you don't have to come up, but we're, it's, you're gonna discuss it anyway, so.
So although Akadia made a very brave and articulate case, um, there's a couple reasons I think it would be a bad idea, and it's not out of any lack of respect for our students, because I hear from them quite frequently, I heard from them a lot, you know, uh, with regard to this book. My concern with it is, one thing that was brought up earlier by a, a member of the community, I apologize, I don't remember your name, that, that it creates, um, an even number of people by adding someone to this committee, and it's, it's good to have a majority when needed.
Do you mind if I stop, you interrupt around that, so I was reading it, and it does say administrators, directors, and supervisors, so you can kind of make it odd if you need it to.
The point, the, the, the other piece is, is more important to me, well, there's two other ones really. At what grade level would we add a student, because this has gotta be something for K through twelve? Where is it appropriate, what age, and you had mentioned, maybe eighteen or older. One thing I worry about is putting a student into this fray, um, to be the focus of people, um, this has been painful, this process, for the people involved. And I just, a sense of protection for our students, I, I not only, not only protect them from the community at large, but the stress that's caused by this from other students, who, you know, want this person to advocate very strongly for the student body, or just, I feel like it's an unfair place to put our, our students.
If, is it something that we could consider? What, if, if the resident who's challenging something can speak, and if the person being challenged can speak?
Student statement.
Could we have a student statement?
If we considered something like that, I, what I'd wanna do is go to the student leadership and find some elected person, some elected member, um, that could be defined. Similarly, when the resident, who was a member of this committee, even when we did the, um, search process for assistant principals, principals, we use members of the school council, because they're democratically elected, um, to serve in those roles, so, um, I think it's, if there's a student who wants to provide information to the committee, that'd be great, I don't, again, I don't think listening is a bad thing, and I, and if that was something the committee wanted to do, I would look toward a student leader. I don't think we need to describe who that student leader is, um, if the community wants to do that.
I, I would make a suggestion that, I, I'm in favor of this, but maybe, you know, Wendy and Chris, if he's a little bit more discussion.
So that's kinda where I mentioned when Akadia spoke, that I prefer to discuss it in the subcommittee, instead of on the spot.
Bring it back. I don't wanna make. Yeah, I, I, just for the record, I support it, I just think we should dig into it a little bit more to figure out what makes sense, like, who should it be?
Yeah, that's fine, Wendy and I can find a time in between now and four weeks from now, whatever, that we can talk about it or something.
We can vote on it whenever it's, I do have the words elected member of student body here, as kind of, it sounds like that's where we're going with it.
If you guys wanna send either of us some emails on things to discuss too, so we have it as we talk about it, you know what I mean?
Do you wanna?
Send it just to me, or send it to Peter, directly, to avoid, yeah.
And then, can I just ask for some clarification in terms of, um, I don't, I made a hard answer tonight, but you looking toward participation on the committee as a voting member, or to be able to, um, petition the committee at the outset of this process, the way we've outlined the way, um, person making the protest or the person who's in the book?
I would support being a voted member, I think.
Me too.
But, we're for, you know.
But that, we could always bring two different ideas, even if.
That's true, we can do that too, so.
But I would allow myself to change my mind on that.
Yeah, prefer not to do, I just, I'm not ready to do any of it today, I guess, it's kinda where I am.
I mean, given the fact that we could potentially conceivably be looking at a case where a fifth grade student council member might be looking at, and they might not be comfortable sitting on a committee with a big adult.
Well, that's, I mean, where Akadia's idea was a high school student, but that's, so all that would have to be written, like, whatever it's gonna
Right.
decide, and I think that's why there just needs to be more discussion on it.
Bigger things to think about, sure.
So thank you for the idea, but, um, next time, we'll have some, well, one way or the other, okay, if it, if it comes out Akadia where we don't propose anything, I'll send you an email, let you know that, I'll address it, let you know too, okay? Um, I think we're good then, right, as far as that goes?
Mm-hmm.
Um, report of the assistant superintendent, Dr. Michelle.
Thank you. I have a few updates for you tonight, um, the first is an update on the FY twenty-four budget. A town meeting is scheduled for April third, last week, the governor released preliminary chapter seventy, um, funding numbers, which is, uh, the funding for schools, and also local aid for cities and towns. So we are currently working with, um, the town officials, uh, to, uh, to, to try to come up with a consensus budget, um, for town meeting, so, it's still in the early stages, I think that budgets came out on Thursday, or Fri- Thursday or Friday, so, uh, we actually have a meeting with, um, town hall on Thursday.
How are you able to say whether, whether you are, oh, happy with what?
Sure, yeah, so, great question, so we, um, the governor has committed to continuing to fund the Student Opportunity Act, um, which increased our chapter seventy this year by about two point one million dollars. And, as you remember, the Student Opportunity Act, um, is a, really a correction to the chapter seventy formula, and, um, and it also adds, uh, funding for such things as special education, EL, um, low income students, um, so, we, uh, for, for another year now have benefited from the Student Opportunity Act funding.
And we'll, we'll do a subcommittee meeting with the consensus.
Yes, yep, thank you, we'll do a, a prior to town meeting, um, as soon as we get information, uh, from town hall, we'll, we'll find a subcommittee meeting.
And it's, it's early this year, but.
April third, yep, seven o'clock, Friday, needs to remember, we'll be next time, Monday night, uh, seven o'clock, town meeting. I also have, I wanted to, uh, take a second, a couple minutes to talk about our school safety and provide a school safety update. Um, prior to school vacation, um, we had a half day, and all of our schools, uh, except for the pre-K, engaged, um, and participated in at some type of Alice drill that was age appropriate, so, it was different, we saw a different drill at Beaver Brook than we did at, uh, the middle high school and at the Woodsdale. Um, I can report to you that, um, all the, our students and staff performed very, very well, you know, I hate even saying they performed well in the active shooter drill, but everyone, um, performed very well, that's not to say that we didn't learn things, and after every one of these, um, we, we take a step back as teachers, as administrators, and look at the things that went well and the things that we still need to work on, so, um, there are items that we're addressing, um, and that we learned from the drills, we will continue to, um, engage in those types of, uh, drills. We'll have another one, at least one more prior to the, um, to the end of the school year. Second, I, two more, sorry, I'll make them quick, um, sec- the second one is the, um, the school department has submitted an application to the state, there's a competitive school safety grant that has been released, so we have submitted an application, um, for that grant, uh, we don't know yet, um, if it's been funded or not, uh, and if it is legal, you know. And the last one is, um, the school department, in conjunction with the Abington Fire Department, and I would say, in partnership with the Abington Fire Department, will be offering Stop the Bleed training for all staff that are interested, Stop the Bleed is, um, the, it's training using a tourniquet and, um, clotting pads, it's a, it's a brief training, but it's a really important training, all, it's not mandatory, it's, um, staff who want to stay and be trained, we're offering a number of trainings after school in the coming weeks, and if a staff member does, uh, participate in the Stop the Bleed training, they'll receive, um, a tourniquet and, um, the blood clotting gauze, um, in a kit, and that they can then have in their classroom. I'd like to thank the Abington Fire Department, um, for assisting with that training.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the Abington Fire Department as well.
Did I say fire department?
You did, I said fire.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Nope, I was reiterating.
Okay.
From us. Uh, new business established, you have a next school committee meeting, uh, Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, here at the library, seven P M. Dates to remember, there's only a few, uh, Tuesday, March seventh, in-service early release day for students and, um, in-service for the staff. On, March ninth and tenth, Friday and Saturday, March, oh, is it Friday, Saturday, Sunday, March ninth, or is that Thursday, Friday, Saturday, somebody? Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Um, Abington High School presents Carrie the Musical here in the auditorium, um, Thursday and Friday at seven thirty P M and Saturday at two thirty P M. Tuesday, March twenty-eighth is our school committee, as I, we just said, Thursday, March thirtieth, um, in-service early release for students at the end of the month, and then, because it'll come up so close, I'm gonna say it now, Monday, April third, will be town meeting, generally, there's a special meeting at six thirty to wrap things up from the prior year, and then it'll start at seven. It'll be in the auditorium, um, here. So, anybody have anything else? So, at this time, I'll be looking for, um, to adjourn to executive session and not to return to regular session. The, this executive session is pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two, to discuss the parameters for a contract for a superintendent of school. to discuss the parameters for a contract for a superintendent of schools. We now at least know who the tentative one is, that was unknown at this time, it was needed to be done, no matter what it was gonna be, so, um, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much, everybody have a good night.